Call the order, Ms. Santiago, please. Oh, sorry. Give you a chance, give me.
Craig Stolling.
Here.
Tiffany Glenda.
Karen Taylor.
Here.
Julio Flores.
Here.
Shazie Rowley.
Here.
Idris Chakravarti.
Juan Hernandez.
Kimberly Oliver.
Here.
I'm here.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right, um, so as we go, thank you guys for coming. As you know, this is a workshop meeting, but we're going to have a special business agenda here or a business item. Someone's going to read that first and get that out of the way, and then we can proceed with our workshop. So our business agenda, item number one is administrative appointment. The board, that, the Board of Education approved the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Dave Fake, Fake?
Flag.
Flag? Say it again.
Flag.
Flag. Dave Flag to the position of Chief Financial Officer effective April 5th, 2018. Madam Superintendent.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Just going to give an overview and then I'm going to ask both David and Dr. Vasquez Matos to come up. Am I, am I on? Can you hear me well? So David has served in financial roles for the past 30 years. He began his career in companies such as Cigna, General Electric, Capital, building his business leadership and financial analysis experience. He served as Controller, National Accounts Underwriter, Vice President, Chief Financial Officer, Founder of Fortune, Founder for Fortune 100, startup and private equity companies. His expertise is in driving business analytics to achieve strategic objectives. Outside of funding his own financial business, most recently he worked as Traveler, at Travelers, as Vice President of Financial and Operational Effectiveness, where he led the largest business process vendor transition in the history of a Fortune 500 company across six different business units, achieved satisfactory audits by redesigning the financial and operational processes to drive greater consistency and clarity of testing and focused on driving synergies of practice, efficiency and expertise across the $600 million organization consisting of 6,400 resources. You know, he's earned a MBA and a bachelor's, the MBA from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute and the Bachelor's of Science and Finance Management from Jacksonville University. Just a brief overview, I'd like for Dr. Vasquez Matos to just give a brief overview of the highlights, if you will, of why we, the committee actually recommended David as one of our high finalists, given our needs as an organization.
So the, so the district actually conducted a national search for the Chief Financial Officer, where we posted the position for several weeks and had basically an applicant pool of about 30 to 40 applications that came in for the CFO position. There was an initial screening process which was done for the applicants to actually mirror what we were looking for in the job posting and job description. Then a selected group of candidates were called to meet with a interview committee, which was put together with individuals who really have a voice or a process in the budget process of the districts. So you had a representative from the Office of Business and Finance, you have principal representations, you had anywhere, any person who actually, representative person who works with grants, federal programs and so forth, as well as individuals who work with different operations in the districts such as food and nutrition. So rigorous questions were, were asked of the candidates and certain criterias that were in the rubric were guided to conversations and scored the candidates appropriately. After the scoring was done, then the finalists were recommended to the superintendent, who in turn then interviewed the candidates and then, and hence here we are today recommending the Mr. Flag for the CFO position. So it was a rigorous, very long process, but we wanted to make sure that we have the right individual who is embracing the mission and vision of the district and who really understood the district model of excellence and the district priorities and move it forward.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to thank the board and the committee for getting me through the process and it's wonderful just to meet everyone. I'm honored to be here. I think the background, someone gives you some highlights into my background, but you know, I'm really hoping that my background in accounting and finance as well as in operational effectiveness, customer service, data and analytics will help me play across a lot of the boards in the organization that we have.
Thank you. Is there any question? Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Mr. Flag?
Yep.
Yes. I had an opportunity to look over your credentials, very impressive, and I also visited the website for Lucid Sky LLC, and I am wondering if you can tell me who the partners are that you are currently working with, with Lucid Sky LLC?
So it's just a sole LLC, it's just myself. So there are no other business partners, if that's what they're asking. So I don't have any, I don't have any at this point, at this point?
I have 25 partners. When I went to the website, it said that there were 25 partners, but I went to that section, clicked on it and it was blank. So can you tell me, so you don't work with anyone else in the organization?
There's no one else in your?
Are you able to name clients that you have?
I don't have any active clients right now. I have one trust client in Chicago, but no active business clients at this point. I just, I just finished up with working for a private equity company.
Okay. And over the past two years that you've been doing your private venture, can you say about how many clients you've had?
I think there's six. I think there's six.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I have one.
Ms. Brody?
Good evening. So what would your role be, would you continue running the Lucid Sky Financial LLC if appointed here tonight?
No, my plan is just to sunset that LLC.
Any other questions? Kim, are you looking? Go ahead, Kim.
No, thank you, first of all. It's nice to meet you. You're very aware, obviously, of the fiscal situation we are in. I'd just be interested in some of your preliminary thoughts, acknowledging, you know, obviously you haven't had an opportunity yet to dive deep, but just having some sense of the context and what we're facing as a district. What are just some preliminary thoughts you have?
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of hard to get into some details, but just on the surface, you know, I think it sounds like we're facing what a lot of companies have faced and are facing in this, in this day and age, and I think it requires, you know, a lot of communication, a lot of dialogue before we start to make some decisions. You know, with my background in data and analytics, hopefully I can bring some of that to us and then, you know, a lot of, you know, what I'll call record keeping, meaning, you know, as we start to make decisions, making sure that we keep a record of what that decision is and let's just keep talking through it and making sure it's working appropriately or if we need to make some adjustments, adjustments. But we have that dialogue upfront and we have some awareness of what that might be.
And do you expect to be the point person with like ERS as you're just speaking about data analytics and how we're using data and information in general?
Sorry.
Oh, it might be too early for you. Okay, well, maybe this is for the Deputy Superintendent, I don't know. But is that the expectation? I mean, I know we're quickly going into budget season, so that'll be a high priority, but just also wondering of the work that we are continuing with ERS.
So, yeah, that would be, that won't be his sole responsibility to be the content person because, but there is a strong participation with the ERS process because there is the, you know, budget conversation on staffing ratios, whether per pupil allocations and so forth, that the CFO would have to be part of the conversations and have also department conversations, we, ERS and his, and the department in achieving kind of what we want to achieve in making those financial decisions moving forward. So not a sole responsibility or the go-to person, but one of, one of the folks who would be those go-to persons for ERS.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll just add also, Ms. Oliver, you know, with regard to ERS, some of the next level of work in addition to the design work that's happening already around what is a model of excellence for Ross and MLK, the next level of work for ERS that would need to be funded, obviously, you know, the next scope of work would entail some frameworks for central office, district-level decision-making on, you know, funding priorities and budgeting and funding schools, right? We know that we're saying we're moving away from SBB, you know, student-based budgeting, but, you know, what are the priorities in terms of the decision-making and making sure that we have a framework that clearly delineates and identifies what schools have decision-making, right, authority, if you will, over and what does the district own, if you will? And so that's a very important next level of work, however, we have to identify funding for that work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Flores?
Yes. The, we are a governmental agency, which is certainly very different from the private for-profit world, and the superintendent was talking about funding and we have no access to capital markets. So a great deal of our funding has to do with grants and with compliance with government and so forth. So I'm wondering how you feel about that. It really is a big shift coming from the for-profit world into this world.
Yeah, I'm actually excited about it. Gives me a chance to, you know, learn and expand on my career journey as well, and hopefully with the help with some of the folks that we have in the organization, they can help guide me through that and, you know, I ask a lot of questions and make sure that we have, you know, prudent decision-making as we work through that, but I'm excited to learn that side, to be honest with you.
Any other questions? Well, I have a few and I guess a comment. So just to piggyback off of what Mr. Flores said, we also, the city actually has no access to the bond market either. So we have capital improvement projects that we are currently in process of, there are other projects we have down the line. So have you, I'm sure you don't have any project management experience, but do you, have you familiarized yourself with how school districts sort of manage that, that process or do you have any kind of idea?
Well, maybe not the school district, but I do have some project management experience and I believe in that. I believe in that discipline, I believe in that tracking and the rigor around how we allocate and spend capital and make sure we're tracking that as it goes in according to plan.
If you, if you can just elaborate, just for those who wouldn't understand what a project manager would respond, would respect to?
Well, you know, such thing as, you know, monthly scorecard check-ins, making sure our swim lanes are put together for every activity that we need to embark upon as we start to allocate capital and as that capital is allocated, making sure we have the appropriate decision-making for that allocation of capital. And then once that is starting to be utilized, also making sure we have, you know, periodic check-ins on utilization, is it being spent in the right places, is it on par with what we expected? If there's something that's not appropriate, making sure we have the right constituents in place to have that decision-making board in place as well. And then making sure we also have a strong communication plan. If it's an implementation, if it's something that's going to affect, you know, students or something in the district, to make sure we've got, you know, a little bit of a runway there to make sure that there's no surprises as implementations come down the path.
Okay. Have you gotten a chance to look at our budget currently, our past budget?
You know, I would say briefly. I'm not sure if it was the entire budget either, to be honest with you.
Probably wasn't. Okay. Well, I asked that question because we have challenges and I'll say, for example, varsity sports, we have a challenge with varsity sports and making sure that we can keep and maintain solid sports programs. That's a priority of our parents and our students, something that we need to try to maintain, however, it's very difficult to prioritize that over instruction. So we are faced with even those critical decisions at this juncture. So I guess what we're all just trying to figure out, if you, not that you don't have the capacity to handle a large budget like $412 million, but the fact that we are going to literally ask you to run into a gunfight with a butter knife and none of us, we've all have assumed our positions in the midst of some kind of storm or some kind of crisis or some kind of serious event that tests, you know, puts the pressure on you almost immediately. And so I can honestly say that, except in this position, you are literally under pressure as of right now, not because of we want you to deliver or we have high expectations, but simply because we have to continue to deliver service and our goal is to deliver quality education. So we have high standards and high goals, but we have beer money, no money. So we have champagne taste with beer money. However, we are trying to figure this thing out. We need not just honest communication internally, but from a board standpoint, we need honest communication and we need, I think, if I articulate this correctly, a financial forecast in every committee. So for example, facilities, some of their issues have financial implications, some of what parent community engagement wants to do in terms of engaging the community has implications and so we have to figure that out. And so a lot of that is at its infant stage and so you would be pivotal in helping us sort of create a blueprint, if you will. So I just, I have no expectation because you're coming from private sector, so I'm not going to necessarily beat you up on that, but I just wanted to say that, and there's one other thing I wanted to mention, and forgive me, the acronym escapes me right now because I was thinking of something else, but OPEB. We have an OPEB account and we have, it was fully funded at one point and since we've, the city's been into budget issues, we have, the city's dipped into that account and so we have to start funding that again. And so there are obligations that we have to our employees that we have to meet at the same time that we're meeting our obligations to our students and our parents. So there is a little trick because we have limited funds. So that, just to give you an idea of the scope of what we're discussing, so we're talking about maintaining quality service or achieving quality service, funding and resourcing school, making sure that our obligations to our employees are met and moving the district into a direction that we are fiscally sustainable. Tough challenge and you're still excited.
I'm ready to start tonight. I'm excited.
All right. Is there any other questions? Any other comments? Hearing nothing? All in favor? Aye?
Yeah, I made a motion.
Oh, excuse me, you know what? I forgot, I thought I made the motion.
So moved.
No, let me do it. I thought I made the motion. I usually make the motion after I read and I didn't do it this time. So is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Has moves their second?
Second.
Has been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes carry? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. I got too relaxed, I knew it was a workshop, sorry. All right, so item number three is a workshop session. So we're going to try to make this quick, but if you have questions, I mean, just hear me out. If you have questions, sort of try to interject them, but we're going to try to let the superintendent sort of go through her presentation and I'm interested if there's questions out in the audience, maybe you can direct them to Christina or Dr. Matos. Sorry, I'm giving you work. Forgive me.
Actually, so before I begin, Dr. Matos, I know that you have in your email the PowerPoint and just to be efficient, I, we did not bring copies for staff, but we certainly have the PowerPoint if you can forward in case you want to follow along. I mean, I know we're going to project, but in case you want to follow along. So tonight's workshop is a continuation of a previous workshop when we initially discussed the four priorities and, you know, we talked about the process that I would then be engaging with, with staff around the major goals, right, those leverage goals that would accelerate our progress moving forward for the district and so that's what we're going to unpack tonight. I'm actually going to, for our staff that's here, I know Chairman Stolling said if you have questions, direct them to Christina, but I think we're an intimate group in terms of size that, you know, we can really engage in conversation and so feel free to engage. The objectives for tonight, to understand the major goals of our strategic operating plan with regard to the history and the past actions as it relates to those major goals, highlights that we want to share with you and the current strategic actions that we're thinking about. And I ask that as we go through the presentation, you bear in mind where we are with regard to the budget process, right? The schools submitted their budgets, we're now in the next phase, which is really calibrating around that and we're going to do the same thing at central office. You know, central office departmental budgets are due at the end of this week and, you know, we'll then try to calibrate as well. And so all of these goals and where we currently are have implications for our budget development process. And then we'll talk about next steps, which entails systemic alignment, making sure that we're all in alignment, not only with regards to budget, but obviously with regard to implementation. And then speak about the monitoring of our shared accountability. If you can recall, last Friday at our board workshop, I did reference my, my plan to actually present to you at the next board meeting, the goals, the strategic operating plan and ask that as a board, you consider adopting the major goals. These are going to be through year 2022, is a five-year plan so that we can remain focused and really committed to our goals. So just begin by grounding, you've seen this slide before, grounding who it is that, that And some of our demographics here, 20,141 students currently. This is a new slide that I wanted to add, given that I'm trying to be very intentional around all of our demographics, not just for our students, but, you know, our staff and even our Board of Ed, just that I, that I added it there, yes. So currently we have 1,652 teachers, 76% of those are females, 24% male. And as you can see, our demographics for our teachers, 76% of our certified teachers are white and 13% African-American and 10% of our teachers are Hispanic. And, you know, when you, when you think about our demographic, right, we know that you reflect on our student demographic. So clearly working towards our recruitment of our minority teachers is something that we continue to focus on.
I have a question, just on the student slide. So how about the, and I know that 1% is a small number, but what about teachers who are identified with ethnic group or the language? How do we, how do we account for this language barrier? Because 97 languages, that's a lot. You said 92 other languages and I just wrapped my head around that. I'm sure there's maybe one or two students here or there, but how do you, how do you integrate that?
It's, it's, no, that's, that's the challenge that, you know, we, we have, we want to make sure that we have those universal strategies for any student that's, that's not a native, right, English speaker. But, you know, there are universal strategies that our teachers employ, but nonetheless, right, you know, it's, it's the issue of content and how our students can access the content. And, and that's something that we have to think through when we think about how do we budget accordingly for, for our students or English learners, 19% of our students are English learners.
Well, the reason I ask that is because I remember in the retreat, we were talking about cultural competency, cultural competency and we were talking about teachers and the rest of that stuff and we were talking about ELL students.
Yes.
And how sometimes they're classified as sped because they're not, it takes them a little longer to, to sort of learn and acclimate, but then they're not, they're, they're over-identified or, so I guess I'm just trying to figure how do we, how are we being intentional in terms of making sure that that doesn't happen? And I was, I just had a random thought, forgive me.
No, that's, again, we're, we're trying to, as we move forward, be intentional around our, our subgroups or in special education, English learners are a subgroup. I mean, I can certainly have Dr. Sellers speak to our efforts around our tier one. Efforts tier one are the strategies that are implemented that most of the students, right, can have access to and be successful in, within their general classroom. But nonetheless, we have to look at our practices in terms of the, how our students progress, if you will, through, through the intervention tiers up until they get to, you know, be referred for special education.
I just wanted to clarify, so this, this is pre-adoption of the model of excellence in terms of the grade configuration, the slide, or is that post?
This is who we are.
That's right now.
Right now.
So it's not reflecting?
No, this is currently.
Okay.
Yeah. Going to move us ahead, this is a slide that we've all seen, this is just a comprehensive view of our strategic operating plan with our priorities to the left and our major goals and I'm going to review all of those as we get into some of the data. Reminder for all of us that we have what I'm calling through, a through line in terms of practice and that is, you know, to have continuous improvement at the center of everything that we do and that is by looking at the goals that we have identified and continuously examining our practice and refining what it is that we do to accelerate progress. This is a slide that kind of calls to mind the shared responsibility that we all have at all levels and the fact that board governance and your leadership is also a strategy that we believe is going to have improved outcomes for, for our students. And so at the center, right, is everything that we do, our four priorities, our goals, our strategies, and then of course, the board and the superintendent in efforts to improve outcomes for all of our students through shared governance and leadership. So when I speak of a major goal, I wanted to have some shared definitions. Our major goals, we have six of them, these are the long-term commitments that we as a district are making as part of our strategic plan priorities. We have four priorities and six major, major goals and the goals are focused And the goals are focused on accelerating growth in those critical areas. We are not saying that we're going to ignore focus and strategies in other areas, but those six goals are the ones that we feel are the highest leverage and also connect supporting goals. And along with other performance indicators, the goals hold the school accountable for making progress to, toward improving student outcomes. We just want to check in with the board. I know that we reviewed these at the last workshop and at the retreat. And so it's here, just for your reference moving forward. I'm going to unpack each one. And so teaching and learning is a priority, and we have two major goals on the teaching and learning. One is around literacy and proficiency in grade three. And then the other one is around increasing our graduation rate. But I'll start here with the first data slide that you see around third-grade literacy. And I'll ask Abby and perhaps Kate and Yvette and, you know, kind of the team to speak to some of the strategies. We looked at this on Friday and we talked about where we are currently. 18% of our third graders are proficient. And if you look at the pie to the left, like 265 students are, are proficient. Third grade, and the rest are, are reading below the proficiency level. One of the conversations that we had was around the matched cohort, Abby. And, you know, the fact that 23, almost 24% are students that have been with us pre-K through grade three and how that is a lower proficiency rate for students that have not been. And the same, sure, you can come up. We spent some time at the, at the retreat talking about that.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I, I appreciate the opportunity to go a little deeper into an overview on this particular major goal, third-grade literacy. So research is clear that grade three is a pivotal year for mastering literacy and is consequently a gateway skill to future success. Reading is how we gain knowledge. And third grade is the year when students transition from learning to read to reading to learn. In the fourth grade, students begin taking in new information and vocabulary through the wider range of texts that they access. So that is why third grade is so pivotal. Struggling readers who have not made the transition may not catch up to their peers and they're four times more likely to drop out of high school. And they also tend to be disproportionately poor students and students of color. So our state uses the smarter balanced assessment to monitor the degree to which our students are mastering the grade level standards. Those would be the Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts Literacy. It serves as a benchmark for how students are progressing toward their college and career readiness in literacy. The state goal is for students to achieve a level of three or higher, which is the meets level on the smarter balanced assessment in order to be considered grade-level proficient. So last year, the 2016-17 school year, 18.3% of our third graders achieved level three or higher on the smarter balanced assessment. This, as Dr. Torres Rodriguez indicated, represents 265 of our third graders last year. 1,183 students were below proficiency on the assessment. This is the third year of the statewide assessment for the smarter balanced. And our performance declined 6.1 percentage points from the 2016 school year. While proficiency for all students went down on this particular administration in 2017, Hispanic student performance declined the most. More concerning is the persistent achievement gap between Black and Hispanic students and those who are considered reduced isolation, those students composing white and Asian students. 47.6% of white and Asian students achieved a level three last year on the smarter balanced assessment, while there was a gap between those students and Black students of 28.9%. And 37 points, 35.7% of Hispanic students scored lower than white and Asian peers. So just to clarify, between white and Black students, there's a gap of 28.9 percentage points. And between white and Hispanic students, there's a 35.7% achievement gap.
Abby, can I just ask a, a question because you're talking about the gaps? And so in, in this slide, we have the students that have had the pre-K experience.
I'll get there. So I was just giving you a, a highlight of the data in general from the administration. Just, I know that it's not here, but just to give you an idea of what we're looking at for our achievement gaps for subgroups.
No, we don't have the slide, but it, you're talking about both resident, non-resident.
I will, I'm going to get there in one second.
Like the, the data that you just referenced.
Is not, it's, it's all together.
All together, yes.
All together, comprehensive, yep. Further, data shows that only 19 of the 371 English learners district-wide in grade three last year achieved the grade level standard on smarter balanced. And for students with disabilities, the grade level proficiency was achieved by only five of 221 students district-wide. So internally, as referenced by the lower chart on this particular slide, the lower right-hand corner, our district monitors other subgroups of students. And what this chart is highlighting is that first bar where it indicates Hartford resident, 14.1%. That was how Hartford resident third graders achieved on the smarter balance last year, so their proficiency rate. So up above, we did indicate that 18.3% of students are proficient. That encompasses both the suburban students and the Hartford students together. So if I isolate out the Hartford students alone, their proficiency drops by four percentage points. Just thinking about those particular kids, the 14.1% of the children, we have some other subgroups that we've pulled out of the information. So patterns of enrollment and attendance also influence proficiency outcomes for our Hartford resident students. We have found, as Dr. Torres Rodriguez indicated, that there is a significant increase of achievement for those students who have participated in a Hartford Public School pre-K program and also have been continuously enrolled without any retentions for pre-K kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. So that is indicated by their proficiency rate of 26, 23.6%. Students who did not benefit from that Hartford Public Schools pre-K year or their pre-K year is unknown, their proficiency rate drops to 12.4%. So just to reiterate, this is only Hartford resident students. It doesn't include the suburban. Students who have some other enrollment pattern where they have not been consistently enrolled with us, K1, 2, 3, maybe they entered in first grade or they took a grade level off, went somewhere else and came back, their enrollment pattern results in a 10.3 percentage point proficiency rate. And then moving forward to students who have been with us continuously, but were chronically absent in kindergarten and first grade. The impact of chronic absenteeism or missing school frequently drops their proficiency to 11.1%.
So that, that one is based on the students that have been enrolled from kindergarten to third grade or from pre-K?
That one is kindergarten through third grade, yes. And they're continuously enrolled. And then finally, the, one of the statistics that is most alarming are those students who have experienced a retention at some point in time before third grade. Their current proficiency rate is 5.9%.
Can I have a question?
Sorry, can you explain that one again? I didn't understand what that meant. Sure. So a student who's been retained, so they've stayed back at some point in time up to third grade, up to, up to and including third grade, their proficiency rate on the smarter balanced assessment in 2017 is 5.9%.
So what do you think that, that would be? Isn't, isn't retention supposed to be a strategy to help students be achieving better? I mean, they're, they're achieving at a lesser rate than the average.
However, they are a dynasty of struggling readers. And so we, I, I suppose the team that comes behind me that talks about our highlights and our strategies can speak more toward our interventions. But I, I wanted to highlight that if we look at these subgroups of students, these are the data points that pop out for us.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What year did we start using smarter balance?
The first year that we implemented smarter balanced with data available back to the district was the 2014-15 school year. So there was a large-scale field test in the 2013-14 where they were piloting the test on a, to, to all schools in the district. However, the data was not available in that year.
So when we, the other slide, so that 2014-15 is not smart about, that is smarter balanced testing?
Correct.
That's year one.
It's the year one of the test.
Not the field test, the actual?
It's the actual test where data were provided to the district.
But it's important to highlight this slide as well. And, and I know Dr. Carbone can, you know, can highlight this, but it's important for us to, to look at the context and where we were from a curricular perspective.
So so far, we just got data, no context?
We're getting into context now. It's just that, Ms., oh, let me go back to a data question.
Yeah, I'm, uh, thank you. So just remind me, what is the state average?
You could ballpark it or maybe. I believe it's 65. We're going to go with 65, 62%. I can get that exact number for you in a second if you'd like.
Okay. And then my other question, because you're not going to ask about pre-K. When we say pre-K here, is this both all types of, of pre-K?
It's, it's a Hartford program, Hartford school program, pre-K.
So not the magnets or the mag?
It would include the magnets as well.
Okay, so basically, as long as it was pre-K that was being administered by Hartford Public Schools, it's in this number, got it? Thank you.
I have a, a data question here. So with the retained portion, the 5.9%, is there any way for us to tell when they were retained? Because I know sometimes a struggle is you should have stayed back kindergarten, maybe the family wasn't on board and then they went to first grade. So I'm, I'm assuming that being retained when you probably need to be retained and not when you actually end up being retained might play a difference in achieving? I don't know, but what I've heard over the years is, is a struggle with a child needing to be retained and then the parent saying, no. So if that, if you, if you were supposed to be retained, if it was recommended that you were being retained in kindergarten and you're not, and you don't obtain those skills that you need for first grade, then you're in first grade, you just don't have the skills to succeed. So I'm wondering, like, maybe when, if, if, if it's possible, that knowing when they were retained, what grade, so we could look at it. I would like to look at it a little differently. I don't know if it's possible, though.
I have a somewhat related, I guess. And from my personal experience, my youngest son was retained in first grade and it was an issue of ADHD and him not being medicated because he was too small. But he went to summer school after that year. And then when it came the next year, the school said, well, he's been to summer school, he can go into second grade. And I said, no, he can't because he hasn't mastered any of the work. And he himself told me that all he had done during the summer was learn how to fill in bubbles and, and multiple choice tests. So he repeated the first grade. And thank God today, he's really got a high school level, even though he's in seventh grade. But I, I wonder what these summer programs do. Are, are they supposed to be a help? Are they a help?
Okay, well, let me just throw one data question in, then you can go to that. Because I'm, I'm very interested into that because I'm jumping on my skin.
I also have a data question.
Yes. Well, then I will throw it out there. You can, and Ms. Taylor can ask hers, and then you can answer them, you want to, how you want to do it. The 10.3 other enrollment, I'm curious about that. Is that students outside of the district, for example?
No, it is, they are representing students that don't have a continuous enrollment pattern with us. So they may have come in third grade and only been in our district, entering third grade in our district for the first time, which means they attended another district prior to third grade. They could have entered in kindergarten, left our district for first or second grade and returned for third grade. They just have inconsistent enrollment.
So that would be our inconsistent enrollment, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I, I know that Shante asked, oh, no, another data question. Ms. Taylor.
Karen.
I, I think it's a data question, too. It is, but you go and then I'll go.
So Abby, if at all possible, can you please share the data highlights with us about the differences in the gaps and that sort of thing? I think it would be really helpful for us to have.
Yes.
The actual data highlights.
Yep.
I also remember that in the workshop, I think it was in February, that I had also asked about state averages because I really think that it is shameful that our bar is set so low for our students. So I would also like to know how Hartford students are performing in other settings as well. Is it possible to pull data for Hartford students in charters, in magnets outside of our district, in open choice, like any other programs? Because I really would like to know, like, is this something that is a correlation between socioeconomic status and testing? Or is it something that we are not doing?
Yes, I can definitely put together a report for you like that with the state average and reference groups. So we're able to access information for achieve, achievement first. We could do Jomoki. Unfortunately for crack, we wouldn't be able to isolate out the Hartford students from the suburban students because the data from the state is not disaggregated in that way.
We need to have it. We, we need to have that data disaggregated.
We could, we could try to work with crack to come up with that or some other districts. But I'll try to get whatever I can for you.
Hartford students in open choice programs as well. I just, I mean, just looking at this to say, okay, like, within four years, the bar that we have set for our students is still going to be about 25 percentage points lower than the bar that the state has set.
Yes.
That is, I mean, there is an urgency around this. I mean, I know that you all are the ones, but it just really is, it's shameful that we set our bar so low for our students. This is a critical thing, reading, it's a basic thing that we should be doing for our students. And we shouldn't be looking at year 2020 to get to 40% proficiency.
So I, I know that Christina, you, did you send the initial state averages? So Abby, maybe you can build on the initial document that was sent to the board back then. And, and I don't, you know, with regard to Karen, the, the bar being set low, it is where our students are unfortunately right now. And to get to 40, even that, right, it's going to require a significant amount of work on our, on our behalf. So I just, I, I want to validate the concern and the urgency with, and balance that with making sure that we have goals that are rigorous and, and attainable, which require that we have these structures that we're trying to, to implement with, with our administrators, with us at Central Office, and then, of course, with grade-level teams in, in the school so that we're constantly holding ourselves accountable for monitoring the progress of our students. And I know that that's not being done consistently throughout the entire district, in every school and in every classroom. So I know that that's an area of improvement for us as well.
I mean, I also want to say that, like, even when our students are with us from pre-K three, they still are significantly below. Like, even when we get them as babies, we still don't do right by them. So, I mean, I don't know if it would be like next academic year, maybe following a cohort of pre-K three-year-olds and then seeing like what the progression is, but we can't allow this. This is, I don't, this is unacceptable.
Can I please add? With testing, I have mixed feelings about testing. I don't let my children take all the tests, I don't. But from one, my youngest child for first grade, because it was a struggle for her that had nothing to do with academics.
But from my youngest child for first grade, because it was a struggle for her that had nothing to do with academics. So with the, and to be fair, she had a substitute teacher because it was a teacher that left just abruptly in the summer. And it was a teacher there, and she goes to a Montessori school, so they didn't know the Montessori way. So it was just a struggle first grade. But once they got, so as far as testing was going, it was not showing up right. She trying to have her way, acting out. So second grade, she gets a teacher, and she's able to, all the year wasted, just from, you know, with what the teacher did, she's able to catch up and get to where she needs to be. And I'm saying that to say that there are, there are things that have nothing to do with, sometimes I think, the ability of the student. There's things going on in our schools, in classrooms, that unfortunately affect learning, and it shows up here. But that's why I stress it's more than, it's, sometimes it's more than the delivery of what the, you know, of the product, is actually what is going on in these schools that, and I, and I, and I, I can talk all night about just, just some experience our kids are supposed to have before they get to a school building. So it's so many factors that I hope that we actually get a chance to talk about and understand, and at least some things we can't control. But at least we know that is a factor, one being definitely from the birth to the time we see them, but also what's going on in our schools, what kind of environments are we setting to, or a lot, or the possibility to have, because all that goes in on in some schools, that the environment needs to be set in a way that delivery can happen. So it's so much, we see the, we see the test scores, but it's so much that goes into that. And I think sometimes we don't talk about that, but if you've been in a school, trust me, you, you're thinking about that.
And we'll unpack some of the school culture and climate data in a bit. Tiffany, I know you had a.
Yeah, no, so what, just a one point that I have a question about, or maybe it's more data about on the pre-K question as well. Kim, Kim kind of teed it up with the different, understanding the different programs. But also, since we do have some pre-K three programs that are district run, that start at pre-K three, and then some that actually start at pre-K four, like, that doesn't differentiate from what I can tell between pre-K three or pre-K four? Or is it just looking at the pre-K four, even if the school had a pre-K three? Maybe you don't know the answer, but I'm curious about that.
Right, so we, we have students who start with us, some of them in the pre-K three school year, which they're age three, and then those who continue on and enter our school district, additional ones who enter our school district at age four for the pre-K four program. In this particular case, I only went as far back as the pre-K four year. So I didn't go back to if they were third grade and look, isolate out. Correct, the program is, just isn't that big. We just don't have that many seats for the pre-K three.
Yeah, no, I'm curious. But it's a big investment. Again, I always say this, we, you know, we forego charging tuition for those seats. We know there's very few Hartford seats in them, so, but I am curious, like, is it benefiting our students at all? Like, in this data, if we go back another year into pre-K three, like, to Karen's point, like, if we have them longer, like, I mean, I would just like to have that data in terms of, like, you know, these are things for, like, the budget and revenue streams, potential that we may could pursue. And then the other question I had, it's really, maybe it's more of a question for you, Superintendent, is I, in the past, I've been very curious and asked a lot of questions about seeing some of this data broken out by our individual schools. Because I think, you know, we have so much variance across the district, which, and I think we still obviously do have a lot of variance. But I'm also, I'm mindful that we are, you know, I think, moving in a direction to kind of try to decrease that variance. But I guess I'm just wondering, is it, what is the relevance still? And how can we use it as a tool? Can we use it as a tool to actually look at this broken out by schools? And what, like, you know, just philosophically, like, where are we with that, you know, portfolio, I guess, approach? And I kind of skipped ahead to the next couple of slides where we talked about, oh, no, yeah, this one where we talked about the Expeditionary Learning Curriculum that we did in 2013, and then it looked like it was something else. And I know we never actually expanded that to all of our schools, although that was a K to five thing, and now we're going K to five. Like, like, where are we philosophically?
So I'll tell you where we're trying to get.
I'm looking at these differences.
What we're trying to get is to have a more universal approach to our work in terms of our instruction, in terms of our assessments, in terms of our practice, and accountability and monitoring practices. You know, it's, it's a changing culture as well, and we need the tools and the structures, right? You talked about looking at all of the schools and breaking them by subgroups, and Abby, right now, is the person that does that work, right? And we ask Abby to disaggregate data for us. We hopefully, we want to get to a place in which we have our dashboards that all of our principals can access, and then build capacity in our leaders so that they can access the data in order to identify the areas of improvement. But there's still a lot of work to be done in trying to get us, even from a curriculum perspective, although I think we're in a better place now, and Kate can speak to that, with regard to having a standard, universal curriculum across all, all schools.
So before you even get to that, let me just interject.
I have another data question.
Okay, I just wanted to say one thing. Our next workshop is May eighth. So if we can have some of that, the data that Ms. Taylor requested, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. That's all. I want to say, go ahead. Ms. Taylor?
Yeah, I just wanted to leave the data portion. So Abby, I'm just wondering, are there things that are not being measured for our students that we should take into consideration when reviewing this data, right? I know that maybe some students may not be the best at test taking. I also don't want to give our suburban counterparts too much credit, because I know that oftentimes, students are taught how to take tests, right? And also, some of the things that are asked are, like, you know, based on a cultural reference that students are more familiar with, right? So are there things within this data, or are there other metrics that are being used that can be a better indicator as to where our students actually are and where they can go?
Yes. So I do want to note that there have been significant changes made to the Smarter Balanced Assessment since it was first administered back in the 2014-15 school year. The state has received feedback about the length of the test, the amount of time that it takes a student to complete the test. I believe for a child to complete the English Language Arts Literacy Test and the Mathematics Test, when the, when first administered three years ago, it was seven hours of testing for one child. Since then, for the English Language Arts Assessment, they've removed a portion of the test called the Performance Task, which was a very heavily handwritten part of the test. They've reduced that, and, but primarily, the test is all computer adaptive at this point, completed on the computer at this point in time. I imagine that there are implications for scoring, and they did realign the achievement levels between the years that they did remove the Performance Task to allow results to be compared. As far as additional indicators that we use to monitor our, our children, actually, starting in kindergarten through third grade, we use an assessment called the DIBELS Next Assessment. And it is a foundational skills assessment measuring their ability to master the foundational skills required to become, to learn, to learn to read, rather than reading to learn.
And do we have that data?
Yeah, we're gonna actually cover that in subsequent slides, yeah. And currently, we also continue to use the NWA MAP assessments as well in grades one through eight. And we also are poisoning ourselves and have begun to collect information about the implementation of our literacy module-based assessments that are embedded right in our curriculum.
And just to call to mind that, you know, we have the, all the other indicators as well. It's just that we chose to have, you know, the third grade literacy as our major goal. But, you know, we have all the other key performance indicators as well. Thank you. So to your point, Tiffany, around the variance, right, this is, this is a slide here that gives us some historical context. And Dr. Carbone can unpack it for us.
So when you, we looked at one static measure of proficiency using the S-Back and want to look at the historical perspective of how did we get to this point, this slide really calls into light the differences between a portfolio model and a model of execution within our district about whether the district curriculum was or wasn't used, or did the district have authority to have schools all use the same common curriculum? So Ms. Taylor, to your stress for urgency, the most important thing that a school district does is ensure that there's a quality tier-one curriculum. And now you can say that we have a quality tier-one curriculum in K six, and then in the other grades as we roll it out. And the reason why I can say now is because you'll see the history of how we got to this point. So going back historically, back into 2013, and the reason why this slide is critical is that those are our kiddos that we just looked at their scores as of last year, and they were K students then. And so what was their experience, and I'm just gonna speak to what was their experience in totality, not necessarily where you're going to see where pilots occurred and where we started to roll things out. In reference to 2013 and 14, K two back then used what was called a read-aloud curriculum. It was the one district curriculum, which was one component of a literacy block. There were five components of a literacy block. And at that time, we only had one. It was the read-aloud, which the teacher did the reading and exposure of literacy skills, and the child did the setting and listening. At the same time, the district did adopt the three-five Expeditionary Learning Modules. And the reason why I'll just say adopted the modules, it was not that they adopted the curriculum, they adopted the modules, which are four modules throughout a school year, aligned to Common Core State Standards, because although the state had adopted the Common Core State Standards, Hartford did not do the work to align the curriculum to that at that point. In 2014-15, we begin to write the curriculum in K two that will align to the curriculum or the Common Core State Standards. And the reason why it's only K two at that point is because in three-five, there are the EL modules, and those EL modules do address the reading, writing, speaking, listening, research standards that are, would be maybe assessed on the Smarter Balanced Assessment. It is also at that time that there are cohorts in, of schools that are beginning to look at that curriculum and backwards map it to the standard to create a comprehensive tier-one curriculum, looking at the components of a balanced literacy block. EL has a guaranteed viable tier-one shared reading experience, and that is one component of the literacy block. So between, it's the role of the district to then ensure the other components within the literacy block are addressed and have materials and guidance around how to deliver that instruction. It was a pilot. It was in six schools. To your point, you may want to look at the data within those six schools. Our highest performing school is Annie Fisher STEM, and it also was part of the pilot. Burl Sanchez and Moylan also have better-than-average scores, and they were also part of the pilot. It was from that pilot that we can, began the architect for the rest of the schools coming on board. But at that time, we still were operating under that school could choose to use the district curriculum or not. Two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, fifteen schools opted to use the K five, now called the K five curriculum. It's also during this school year that we have a cohort of literacy, literacy leaders who create walkthrough tools to help us norm all of our practices within all of the components within a balanced literacy block, foundational skills, the read-aloud, shared reading experience, guided reading and writing. Bringing us to last year, where for the first time, all of the schools, K five, used our balanced literacy curriculum and was implemented. And so those would be our little people in kindergarten who are now in first grade. I can ask, you can ask me any questions about everything that I said. The score to the farthest right is the NIWA score or the MAP score. It's also a computer adaptive test. It aligns primarily on vocabulary, reading comprehension, and reading for information. There was one more slide that talks about the DIBELS score. A couple of critical moves happened between 2015 to 16. One of the areas that was not fleshed out was the specific reading of the foundational skills within our K two. And as a result of that, and doing audits of our classroom instruction, we opted to purchase the Foundations Program, which is a foundational skills reading program that teaches everything from letter recognition to high-level vocabulary, and is a progression through K through three.
So this is a point of clarification. The Montessori's aren't in this. When you say it's all the schools that.
The Montessori's used are, since I was the portfolio director for the Montessori's, I can totally speak to it. So the Montessori pedagogy is an individualized pedagogy. But within each of the grade bands or the planes of development, ages three through six, first grade to third grade for traditional language, there's a progression within their literacy albums that their child should go through. What we did was we backwards mapped that to the Common Core State Standards and to ensure that students were being exposed to the grade level expectancy, as well as with, and receiving instruction of where they are individually.
So it is, it is actually then?
It is. And they do guided reading, same guided reading that is in a traditional classroom, because that's the best way of meeting students at their instructional level and moving them to standard.
I'd like to go back to my question phrase differently. What, what are summer programs supposed to do for these kids who are retained?
So I'll keep the retention away from the summer school, and I'll talk to you about what summer school. So summer school is a mandated program that all students within grades K through three should have if they are not achieving a benchmark. And for Hartford sets their benchmark at forty percent proficiency on the NIWA assessment, the MAP assessment. That's our indicator of, of a child who would need remediation during the summer. The program that's designed should match the child individually and should also complement their intervention program that the child should have been receiving, because we should know at that point that the child's not meeting grade level proficiencies out of the first assessment we have in September with the DIBELS. Based on that, that's how their summer program is designed, with some progress monitoring in certain specific skills that we said, that we would, we would say your child should master. So, for example, if at the end of K, your child is not fluent with first sound, first letter sound fluency, we would have some benchmark data to say by the end of summer, they will, you know, master twenty first letter sounds, or ten out of the eight-week cycle. It would be specific to the child's need and change throughout the child's development. But it should be that specific, and it is used and informed through the summer for their programming in September. So when the child enters school, that programming would just pick up right where it left off.
I have a question, I'm sorry. And I don't mean to be, I don't want to distract from the seriousness of this, but from a parent perspective, how would a parent support a struggling reader? And I just leaned over to ask the superintendent, you know, you know, what, is the DIBELS like a? Oh, sorry, I jumped ahead, forgive me. But anyway, I'll say it, just because I threw it out there. Is DIBELS like phonics, or is what you're?
So for the, DIBELS changes every grade level, and it has different subtests for each grade level and changes during the school year.
So just then, my general question is, how would a parent understand and follow in? So just then, my general question is how would a parent understand and follow and able to help the student?
So I can, I'll give an example of third grade using the DIBELS data. So this slide speaks to one of the points I brought up earlier around the need for purposeful delivery of foundation skill, foundational skills, pedagogy and instruction. This shows the difference between schools that use foundations, which is the foundational skills phonics program versus schools that did not, and the rate of growth between winter and fall this year. And the schools that are using the foundational skills program, foundations are making better than average growth compared to our overall DIBELS score. In reference to this assessment in particular, there are four key components to the assessment. One is the retail, one is oral fluency, how quickly and fluently I can read within a minute, then accuracy, how quickly and accurate I read in a minute, and then the last score, which is the day's score, which is the comprehension. When you look at the scores, although what we're finding, and it's going to, uncovers another area that we have to focus on within the Office of Elementary and Curriculum, when you look at the students proficiency with each of, within the subtests, their rate of accuracy, their rate of fluency, and their retail, we're scoring in the high sixties in many of the schools, yet our comprehension, the day's score, is much lower, which is the comprehension piece. So we're, which speaks to two things. We're teaching students how to decode, we're teaching students how to read fluently, but what the, what is meant, the comprehension, what the passage means, we're not. So that speaks to a Tier One comprehension, delivery of, development of vocabulary and having students be in and among text, doing deep work. So that lets us know, we can, and for a parent, I can say that same thing to you. So I could say, your child can read fluently, here's an example of some of the words they read fluently out of the minute, they've, we're accurately able to read blah, blah, blah. Here are some words that they're struggling with, whether they're compound words, whether they're multi-syllabic words, or your child can tell me everything that happens in a story, retell it like word for word. But when I ask questions that are beyond the page, they struggle. So when you're at home and you're reading, don't read the questions that might be within the picture or ask questions around the picture, ask some questions that the child has to think beyond what is in an innuendo or what's meant by certain vocabulary words, or skip a word and ask them what they mean. So we can give some strategies to parents to help them.
Now, just out of, and I can move on and let other people ask questions, but my children used to get sight words. Is that still a thing? I don't know.
It's still a thing.
All right. So it's still a thing. Is there like a group, for example, can I go to a website and then see just a massive list of these, this is what my child should know, know and master? And, okay, good. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
So just a comment on that, though. At least in the early years, isn't there some discussion around whether or not that's the best mechanism or not for sight words? Not to complicate...
That's what I asked.
Complicate the issue, but I know there are some others in teaching and learning that, yeah.
Right, right.
Regards to how parents can help. How do we find ways to help the parents? If I go to a parent teacher conference, I have these discussions with a teacher, but what about those parents that don't? And what about those parents that don't have the ability?
Right.
How, what strategies do we have to help those children who don't have the necessary supports at home?
So there's, the next slide talks about what our current actions are and then like areas of growth and ways the community can also help. So where we need to go and where the literacy team is poised to go is, and what you're speaking about, is our need to connect with our community partners, with Hartford Public Library, with our CBOs. And within the K two curriculum, we've created parent guides, pamphlets, that we would like and are poised to bring out and on the road to share with our community partners, to help them understand what our curriculum is, the library as well, and also helpful tips for parents to, at home. And some of it is print based, some of it's not, it's language based. Ideas to help your child within each of the eight units of instruction that fall within the K two curriculum. Additionally, we have programs that support after school and also within school day through our tutors, our literacy helpers of United Way, and linking our literacy team with those folks has also, is also a next step for us to ensure that we're using the whole village to help support students.
A lot of our children are English learners. Do we know, and now we're talking about English literacy, do we know of those children which are, how many are literate in their own language? Does it make a difference in the strategies we employ as to whether they're literate in another language or totally literate?
So it's critical. So we have also, within those pilot schools, we have, Sanchez has a bilingual room, or bilingual K one and two, and what we're finding is our schools with bilingual classrooms that also mirror our curriculum. Those students score commensurate or better than, and outperform the district. So yes, it's critical that we create bi-literacy as students are learning in their native language, how to read and write. They're learning in English as well. And that is occurring in five of our schools at this point.
I also wanted to add, you may be interested in looking at data. One of the KPIs that I believe that you reviewed last time was regarding the English...
Language proficiency indicator. And that is the attainment of English by our English learners, and they take an annual assessment called the LAST links every year, which measures the degree to which they're acquiring English. We would be able to break out our grade three performance if you're interested by what level they scored on their language acquisition assessment, if you wanted.
Abby, we're still working on a baseline for that?
So the baseline's been established at ten percent, which is what our district, we actually took a huge decline in this particular assessment from the 2016 school year to the 2017 school year. And we do believe some of the root causes involve the difference in the test administration in that it went from a paper-based test to an online test. But moving forward, for the next generation accountability, the state's accountability model, we do expect the state to add that as an additional indicator for the district. So we expect that baseline to change to a growth measure as opposed to a proficiency measure.
And we'll have to take into consideration the 450 students that came in and how we're going to think about that baseline.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And is it true, I think one of the best facilitator trainings that I've ever took was from Hartford Foundation, and it was called Let's Talk. So one of the things that I, and I always go back to that training, was that like with our families, if we're talking to our families and say if your, if your strong language at home is Spanish. In that training, I learned that we would encourage the parent to talk to the child in Spanish instead of broken English and you're trying. So are we having like those kind of conversation with our parents so they could do the best that they could do at home along those lines? Like it's so many things that stood out from that training that I always go back to, because it's simply using language. It's a parent doesn't have to buy anything, it's incorporating the use of language from birth and implementing that in everything they do. Bath time, at the grocery store, at the laundromat, every single thing. And it's something that I think some of our parents who may not have, is just something easier for them to do that could have a great impact with language, that they said it's better if you speak really good Spanish to learn English from that instead of your mother trying to speak English because that's what you're learning at school. So I just think it's some missed opportunities that we could just really capitalize on with working with our parents so they could do much, like much more at home to make it transfer over to school.
I have one question. This isn't probably quantifiable in data, but like, where in this, or how do we know, measure, see, ensure that we're like making reading fun and that it's relevant to our student? I mean, you know, you were talking about how, you know, this comprehension thing, and I just, I just wonder, you know, how are we measuring whether their reading material that is really relevant to them, that really speaks to who they are, that is actually culturally competent to their experience and that is, that they love and that they just enjoy?
And if I can just piggyback on that, I went and got these magazines, this is something I used to read a lot as a kid, just to poke my nose through, because they were lying around. But, right, the culturally content types of material and things that they're actually going to pique their interest, because I can just speak from a personal standpoint, I'm not reading the book that you gave me as class, as an assignment, and I'll take the F on that, but I'm reading, you know, if that makes sense. I read what I wanted to read. And as a result, you know, got me some trouble. But either way, the point, the point I'm making is, to Tiffany's point, how do we know, how are we ensuring that they're, they're reading and they're sort of engulfing themselves and thinking that they're interested in? Because that passion in and of itself would reinforce the reading. And to piggyback on that conversation, that when I was in school and I'll just speak for myself, I had to read in every subject. So I just never got away from reading, like you just literally read everywhere where you went and every book. So I just don't understand that. And let me just throw one other thing in there. The disparage, the, the, the difference between African American and Hispanic readers and African American and Caucasian readers, no, excuse me, Hispanic and Caucasian readers, or white readers, that's alarming.
In terms of proficiency, you mean?
Yes. That's alarming. And I would like to dig into that, but I, for the sake of time, I'm just going to throw that out there. Maybe we can get back to that at some other time. But that's alarming. So if you can answer Tiffany's, Ms. Glanville's question.
To the, to the question around, are we making sure that reading is enjoyable? And I see myself in the literature. In our K five, we've done a curriculum audit to ensure that every child could see themselves in the literature that they're reading, and in particular during independent reading and their guided reading, those are choice books. So the child has autonomy around text selection. The shared reading experience, that would be a common reading experience because we're looking at a skill, and then they go and practice that skill in their independent or in their guided reading text. In reference to the six through nine curriculum revision, we've purposely made it a text agnostic curriculum so that we can have texts that match the children and the practitioner and not be dictated to what text you have to read. So we've been very purposeful in that as we design our new curriculum.
And back to language learners, yes, I have come across situations where children come in and they have not been to school at the level that their age, that you would expect them to be at that age, or they haven't been to school at all. Has that been an issue in our system? And if so, how do we address that?
We have a variety of life circumstances that our children face, and so some of the children may not have had consistent schooling prior to entry into Hartford Public Schools and/or any of the schools in our, in our area. Based on that, we're going to follow the same progression. So the development of reading, so all students think. We don't scaffold thinking. Expose students to grade level work, and then you help them become literate. And so if you create the program and have the expectations that all students can think deeply, they need to be exposed to the vocabulary, or they need to be exposed to content and being taught the explicit strategies to read, we can mitigate all those other life circumstances.
I have one. Carrie?
Yeah. I wanted to go back a little bit to what Mr. Flores was saying around summer school. And Abby, I know I'm picking on you, but I want to know all about the data. So we just recently established a teaching and learning committee, and I'm thinking about the district model for excellence and the fact that this summer, there's going to be like some prepping and some transition, right, in terms of like the movement of our students. And I really think that getting the summer school piece right and making sure that summer school is actually a service for our kids that's moving them academically. Can you share with us some of the summer school data, maybe where students are prior to summer school and at the end of summer school? Like are there any, is there any testing or metrics that lets us know like whether or not summer school was indeed effective, like, you know, as we think about like making sure that summer school is, is an enriching experience for our students? Especially like as we go through the district model for excellence, it's going to be really critical that our students are well prepared to enter into the different educational settings that they'll be going in, especially because of the variance within our system.
So there are a couple of levels to the approach that we've used for summer school in the past. So the state for the students in K through three, because we are a priority school district, requires us, we have state mandated requirements for summer school. So on our DIBELS assessment, which is an assessment required by the state office because we are a priority school, they require students who are at well below the benchmark, a cut score of well below the benchmark, to attend summer school for K through three. So that those kids are state mandated. The district on top of that has set another cut point for district mandated summer school, and that was what Kate was referencing, using that fortieth percentile from the N W A MAP assessment, additional to flag kids who may, summer school might be an appropriate intervention for them. Across all the students, both pieces of that information, both the DIBELS and the N W A MAP, we are able to look at the spring results to the fall results to see if there's been growth. I think internally as well, this summer school programming embeds a pre and post assessment at the beginning and the end of the five-week program to understand the student growth.
I'm sorry, what's that assessment called? The one pre and post summer school?
It's a homegrown assessment based in the schools that's usually cultivated at the beginning of each summer programming, so it may change from time to time. But it's generally the ones that I've seen are similar to what the DIBELS is measuring that foundational skills.
So it's done a district-wide, it's like a school by school assessment?
District, grade level, district specific.
Grade level, okay.
And up to this point in time, it hasn't been collected in a centralized place to look at the pre, post data, although we do know who the students are who do participate in summer programming.
But it's a universal, I just want to clarify that it's a universal assessment for each grade is the same.
Yes.
Got it.
What we don't have is the centralized warehouse of the data.
Right. I mean, I think it's critical for the teaching and learning committee to look at that particular data, especially as we enter into the district model for excellence, just to ensure that the summer programs are preparing our students to enter into the different educational settings. I mean, you know, just for life, but I'll just say district model for excellence.
Maybe this was your question, the policy, like that if you go to summer school, if you're getting retained, do you have to go to summer school? Or is that like avoided? Are they connected at all? Because you were going to, I was going to...
Because you were gonna, I was gonna talk about retention.
Yeah, sorry.
So, retention works if you can ensure there's a substantially different academic program for the child that is different than what the child's being exposed to, first grade to first grade.
Like a plan B.
What should happen is that we have an intensive intervention and remediation of the skills and concepts to accelerate the child's learning so that we don't need to retain. So if they're responding to intervention, we know that child has struggling with mathematics or reading, and we put in an appropriate intervention and monitor it every six to eight weeks. We should be monitoring interventions, parents should know what our interventions are and see if their child's making that progress. Then we're going to be able to say that although your child's not at grade-level expectancy, your child is making growth, and we have a pre and a post and progress monitoring tools to let us know that your child's making growth, we may not retain that child. If the child's not responding to intervention over a series, two to three, four cycles, then we may look deeper and ask for other academic testing to see if we're missing something, that the child may be a child needing special education services. Remedi, retention works for a very small population at certain grade levels, but doesn't have the wow factor of helping accelerate a child's performance in the long run. So we use it very sparingly. Or it's my suggestion, you should use it very sparingly.
And, and closing a gap in four weeks, right, is not...
That possible?
A good, you know, intervention cycle's between six and eight.
And so to identify those specific skills that we would narrow in on over those four weeks is probably the best way to go.
So, I'm sorry, just one more question. Going back to summer school for a moment, and we talked about being able to identify those young people and what we use here in Hartford. Are we also like mandating attendance or monitoring the attendance of those children? Because obviously it's one thing to identify and say, you should be going to summer school, but I actually don't know what the policy is. If a parent could be like, okay, here you have, but we're, you know, we're going to be North Carolina, you know? So, I'm just wondering how that works.
I think that's where the retention's coming. So it is parents' right to not attend, have their child attend summer school. And in some cases, the retention is a result of the fact that the child didn't attend and therefore hadn't made enough developmental change.
So is there a way for us, kind of going back to data, that would be helpful? And, you know, Abby, you're giving a lot of homework here, but I'm, you know, obviously we know for the children who actually go to summer school and has a certain or maintains a certain level of attendance, how they are performing versus those who are going intermittently or inconsistently, et cetera, right?
We would definitely have data that would say, not historical data per se. We would have data on who has been referred to summer school and who does or doesn't show, go to summer school going into this season. Historically, we would have, at the school level, who attended summer school, but not necessarily who didn't. And was referred.
It, it's also differs across our schools as far as their attendance-taking habits during the summer programming, the accuracy of the daily attendance recorded for the students attending.
Okay. So, so you have what you have at Central, but acknowledging there may be some other variables on the ground.
And there may be one other variable. Not in, in many of our schools, we do not have the same teachers who the child has during the school year.
Right.
Be their instructor during the summer. So many of our summer school programs are teach, are certified teachers teaching it, but they may be from a non-Hartford school.
And I guess this could also connect, and someone had mentioned it earlier, too, our partnerships with CBOs, et cetera, at the schools, right? In terms of the roles they may be playing or should play in terms of supporting this type of, of intervention. Thank you.
So...
It's Power School that we also use in the summertime. So we, the, the, the database is there. So it's adult practice.
So, I, I just want to say, just, we're throwing a lot of data requests at you. Don't feel that you have to, I mean, we won it all, but don't kill yourself for May 8th. You can tear it for us, but we're going to need that, so. And, and I just had one, two things. One, Waukeson has a summer school, sometimes they host some of our kids at Waukeson, so that might be something that we can look into. And two, these, this reading intervention, I know that they used to happen during the day and then thus impact the students' regular day-to-day instruction. So even though they're in school, they're present, they're missing algebra because they're in a reading intervention, or, well, not algebra, but they're missing math or some other subject because they're in a reading intervention.
So we're creating, the, the district model of excellence, we're creating the opportunity that you won't do that.
Okay.
Because that's not what we're allowed to do.
And even at the high school level as well, so.
So can I just reset on, so from 2016 to 2017, that was the first year, that, this last school year, the kindergarteners' last school year?
It was the first year.
Was the first year that we...
All 28 schools.
So like, as we, just like resetting where we're at now, like, looking forward and measuring data from here on out, like, these kindergarteners, or they're now first graders.
Right.
Are the benchmark. Are the benchmark.
But we have to think into consider, take into consideration that the adult, right, and the capacity that is necessary that, that we want sustained. And if they're new to the district, right, we have to think about professional learning, capacity building there as well.
I'm just going to say this out loud, well, you, no, no, keep going. I'm going to say this out loud, just because as a parent, that is the most shocking thing that you can hear when you think that your student's teacher is not, doesn't have the capacity to actually do what they're, they're to do. That's, that's, um, yeah, so, but I know you guys are working on that collectively.
Well, yeah, well, it's still infancy stage, when you think about it, in terms of district-wide implementation. And so there's still some practices that we have to continue to codify and build muscle around.
You haven't, you haven't used that in a while, build muscle.
So we're going to transition to the other end of the spectrum, if you will.
Right.
Another major goal under the teaching and learning priority, which is the graduation rate. We also looked into, looked at this data slide at our retreat, and the goal is to increase by nine percentage points by 2022. I'll let Abby unpack, and then we can talk about where we are, some current highlights, because there are some promising practices, but also you'll see, and Tiffany, I'm sure you're, you're gonna, this is going to jump at you in terms of the variance and how many stops, how many stops and goes, right, we've had throughout the years around strategies.
Okay. So graduating from high school is an important milestone in a student's education. Research shows that students who do not reach this outcome are on a path of limited opportunities. They cannot enter higher ed and training programs and tend to earn less income than low-skill positions. Current statistics show that 70% of the jobs in Connecticut next year will require a college degree. In 2010, the, the State Department changed the way that it calculates graduation rates. So rather than doing a seniors, senior class rate, it adopted a model, a common graduation measure that is in alignment with federal accountability requirements to better understand the strategies that promote increased graduation outcomes for students and reduce dropouts. This method is called the adjusted cohort graduation rate, and it tracks students who graduate on time within four years or less of entering ninth grade. So here we are looking at our 2017 rates that the state recently released. It was in February that they released this information to the district, it may have been March. And this is regarding the 2017 rates indicated there by the 68.8 percentage rate for 2017. Those are the students who entered ninth grade for the first time during the 2013-14 school year, so four years ago. The rate is down 1.9 percentage points from the previous 2016 70.7% rate. However, a similar number of students graduated on time in both cohorts. So although the rate dropped, it's the same number of students who are graduating on time. So the cohort was bigger. Since 2010, when monitoring the cohort graduation rates began by the State Department, the district has improved its graduation rate by nine percentage points in nine years. 31.2% of the students in the current graduating cohort, or 482 students, did not complete high school in four years. So I'm dropping down to the chart on the bottom right-hand corner. And so that is indicating the enrollment outcomes for graduates and non-graduates. So I'm referring to non-graduates right now, which are the opposite of the 68.8. So the 275 plus the 207 in the bottom right-hand corner, those are indicating the non-graduate students. That's 482 students. So this is an increase, an increase in the number of students who did not graduate in four years, 2.2% from the previous year. Results show that 4.8% of students who are still enrolled in school has increased. So more students are still enrolled in school. However, 2.6% of students have dropped out, more students have dropped out of school, so.
Just wait, maybe just understand that. So more have stayed...
In school.
In school.
No, fewer have stayed in school, yes, sorry, excuse me, I'm so sorry.
More are still...
More are in, and fewer are dropping out, yes.
And fewer are dropping now?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's an encouraging data point that the dropout rate has dropped to a rate of 13.4%, and it's the lowest rate ever reported by the State Department for our district.
And now it's a matter of identifying the increase on the other end, which is taking our students longer, perhaps, to graduate.
And that's okay, because research shows that sometimes it takes students longer to graduate in high school than four years, especially for our English learner population.
We'll have to, we'll have to unpack that a little more.
It's a rough meeting, boy.
I struggle with that. I struggle with this notion that it takes our students longer. And so, that's hard for me to accept. But however, right, I would need to look at the research. I don't want that to guide, right, our programming and our interventions for our students.
So just like with the third grade slide, I can share with you the highlights that I have embedded here. But just in general, I just want you to know that we have similar graduation gaps than, that I talked about with the literacy gaps. So the largest graduation gap is occurring with our Hispanic students. That gap is 29.5% between the white students and Hispanic students, and the gap between...
Abby, can I, regarding, is the, does the data support that for Hispanic students? Which subgroup, I guess, takes longer? Do we have that data? It's just a wondering. Of the students that are taking longer to graduate, is there a specific subgroup?
I can get that information to you. We have a five-year cohort rate and a six-year cohort rate, and I could definitely get that information to you. Right now, I'm just highlighting the, the largest gap in graduation outcomes. So that gap being between Hispanic students and white students is 29.5%. And with black students to white students, it's 16%.
21.
29.5. So almost double the gap of the black students with white students. So our trajectory on this indicator is within five years, we expect to increase our graduation rate nine percentage points, representing an annual growth increment of 1.8 percentage points. That would put us very close to breaking that 80% mark by the year 2022. In addition, I just wanted to note that in the state accountability model, the ultimate target for this is 94% by the year 2030. And in addition, the state defined our 2021 target. Because we are an opportunity district, they defined that target benchmark, that minimum benchmark for us, that being the 77.9%.
Ms. Allen?
In addition to the, the other data, can you break it out by grade level? Because I know ninth grade is usually, well, we usually see a trend of significant dropout, and I'm just wondering if that's what we're seeing.
Which grade level the students dropped out?
Yeah, so I know you're saying we have less students dropping out, but are we still having the ninth grade issue that a lot of districts see?
So, Kim, you know, one of the, perhaps, challenges that we have is around the, the ninth grader and then the ninth grade repeater that repeats multiple times, right? And then we have this bottleneck effect, if you will, in terms of our data, that we have to not only isolate by the current ninth grader that's not on track to graduate, and then everyone else. And so we have to, as we think through our dashboard design, Abby, think about, think about that.
Yes, and an additional thing that we hope to achieve for next year is a better partnership with the State Department to better understand our cohort. So a, a child doesn't necessarily start ninth grade with us under the state model. At the end of it, they graduate with us. So a child can enter our district anywhere up until 12th grade, and they graduate with us. However, they can enter any school in Connecticut in ninth grade, and we are responsible for their graduation outcome. So unfortunately, in the ninth grade year, we may not know what year they actually entered without doing a deep transcript review. But we're hoping to work in partnership with the State Department to better understand...
I'm sorry. Can I get that right now?
Yeah.
Can we tag, tag the student in Power School?
We can't tag?
Not before we get them.
When, so the ones that go from eighth to ninth grade within our district, we know when they first entered ninth grade. It's the ones who come to us from out of district that we don't know about. They could have entered ninth grade the year before, or in that year, we wouldn't know.
How could we not tag it? We can't tag the entry to Power School?
At this point.
Oh, okay.
Say that again?
There's not a process in place at this point for that.
We can...
This is the first...
Power School around that.
So beyond, beyond that issue, can we, are we comfortable saying that the 2016, '17, '18, almost 40% that we are not graduating are all the type of students who are transient? We can't necessarily say that, because we don't know exactly who comes and goes, but we can safely say there's definitely room for improvement and that this can be done. The work can be done. So I understand that identifying the cohort is a struggle, ongoing struggle, and the data, they're working on that with the state. But the, the good news is, we, we saw a spike between 2012 and 2013. And the better news is, if we implement some of those research-based strategies going forward, we can most definitely attain our goal as a district.
So, but we know who our rising freshmen are.
Correct.
So we have that cohort.
Correct. Correct. And we have recently begun the conversation around taking what we know and working with that, and then leaving that other conversation with the state to continue to evolve and emerge. But definitely working with who we have, identifying who came in in 1415, seeing where they currently are, if they are still with us, what grade are they currently in, and what are we doing to ensure that they walk in June or August of 2018?
And that's a, that's an annual conversation you guys are having with the state?
That is a current, that, actually, this, this work started back with Dr. Campbell, where we started to scratch our head around how do we truly identify our cohort? And it's been a back and forth since then. And Abby is continuing that conversation, and she's gaining allies in, in the quote-unquote fight to find out the cohort, that, to figure out how we can truly identify our cohort. Because quite honestly, by the time the state gives us our graduation information, it's, it's too late. They don't give us our cohort graduation information until March or April.
Yep, so that, that's a struggle that I'm having in terms of if our schools can identify who our students are. And so why, why can't we have an internal process to code our students?
I think what Abby's pointing out is that our graduation...
I think what Abby's pointing out is that our graduation rate depends on how quickly students graduate, even if they come to us in eleventh or twelfth grade. So that is one slice of students. And what Sonia's pointing out is that we own and feel responsible for every student, no matter when they come to us. So we are, we'll get to some strategy slides, but those strategies are in place to help any student, starting with those who are with us in eighth grade and move to ninth grade, but also students who come to us later.
So you know who came to us in tenth grade, but you don't know if they did ninth grade twice.
Right.
Right. Right.
And we know who we transitioned from eighth to ninth.
Yes.
Right.
But for all those students, we need to make sure they're all moving forward now, on track as quickly as we can. We can't undo the past, but we're, we're focused on moving all students forward when we have.
Right, but if we need to collectively make an ask of the state, then we need to know what the ask is.
Exactly.
It's obvious, we need to make certain requests as a board, supporting the superintendent. So I hate to make, work for committees, so I'm just gonna ask you to work with Christina. Thank you.
And I just think that there are a lot of implications for us, given that we're trying to build a middle school framework. And so, yeah, and, and while, you know, we might have already missed the opportunity for those students that came in and, and are currently, you know, halfway through high school, identifying, you know, earlier on, any antecedents in terms of our practice is what I'm really after as we design, right, the pathways moving forward.
Makes sense.
I have a question. So if a student, um, if a student starts with us in ninth grade, right, and then goes to Manchester, right? How are we, like, how do we code students who are leaving the district? They're not dropouts, right? Are we able to, like, fully track students who are not within our district anymore?
So we would code that child in our Power School environment as a transfer, O one, a transfer to another public institution in Connecticut. They would become Manchester's outcome at that point in time. However, it could be an issue for us if they then drop out of Manchester.
And then it's counted within our numbers?
So, so that's what you, that's what you said the first time. I'm glad you asked that. So, because you said, we are, we, we own our students, no matter, if they start in high school with us, no matter where they go, in the state. Is that correct? That we, we, their graduation outcome is attributed to us?
There's, there's two sides.
Only if they drop out?
We need to be able to determine that we don't have the whole picture for the students. We need to know when the students first entered ninth grade, and we need to know what happened to them, if they graduated, or another outcome for them. Their transfer to a magnet school, or whatever it might be, if it was discontinued schooling, whatever the outcome might be, we need to know that as well, in order to accurately predict our own graduation rate.
Well, we don't know that either, is what you're saying.
We don't have the whole picture.
But does the state have? The state does, you're saying, got it.
And every other district is responsible the same way, I'm assuming. How do we know if a, how do we keep track of students, say, that are in eighth grade? And they grow, they're promoted to ninth grade? Do we know if they, if you graduated eighth grade from same school? Do we make sure that you, you got accepted into Hartford High and you actually started in Hartford High? Like, is it a possibility for students to just fall off the map?
It is a possibility. It, it could happen. We do have checks in place for our annual state collection between June and October to account for those students as they roll over to the next grade level and transition schooling, whether it be between one of our schools or be between us and Manchester, for example. But it is possible for kids to fall through the crack if they don't show up.
So you could say he got accepted to Hartford High, but Hartford High say, he never came.
Oh, absolutely.
Exactly.
That came up in another community meeting, and I was like, ask that question.
That happens quite a bit, especially.
That's scary.
Oh, wow. Well, you don't know if they just stopped going to school, or if they moved to another locality, right?
So we're supposed to track that. We're supposed to find out exact, the school is supposed to track exactly what happened to that child and transfer the record once a transfer request has been received. So, you know, they still have the student's cumulative record. When they receive a request from the receiving school, they're supposed to transfer it. But what if the kid doesn't show up somewhere? So we're, we, we are supposed to do, you know, child procedures, where we're supposed to locate where they went. I, I can't speak to the outcomes of all of those investigations.
I have a question.
Ms. Allen?
So, a couple of questions. One is, could you also, as you're doing your data, us look at the number, like, and I don't know if you can break it out into ranges, like, for those who are dropping out, how many credits short are they? So I was part of a national conversation where sometimes young people are like one to two, and they don't even realize, and they didn't finish. The other thing is, I would like to better understand where adult ed plays in all of this, right? So if, I don't, and I don't know, but if you're seventeen and back in the day, there are people who are like, oh, I'd rather just go to adult ed. I could do this, like, you know, accelerate it, you know? And I know at one point, I think we did a practice change at HPS around that. But if they then go to adult ed for HPS, then is that considered they graduated? Okay, so Abby's saying no. Wow, okay, so if.
It's not a high school diploma.
Wow, so.
But they have two programs at adult ed. They have the GED track, and then they have the high school diploma track.
Yeah.
And we have to show evidence that a seventeen-year-old has actually enrolled in the high school diploma track. I don't know how that counts towards our cohort, but I do know that the State Department of Ed mandates that we clearly identify and show evidence that the student is not going towards their GED, but going towards attaining a high school diploma.
So when do we do credit recovery? Or we don't do credit recovery?
Yep, we do. We can, we can speak to that.
I saw that on either slide.
So, but to be clear, I just want to be sure I, I understand Sonia's too. But if they go GED, that means they dropped out, or they did not graduate.
They did not graduate if they obtain a GED as opposed to a high school diploma, correct.
But you must be at least eighteen to go for the GED. Is that correct?
No, if you're seventeen, with parental consent, you can seek your GED as opposed to a high school diploma, but with parental consent.
So how do we remedy this with no money?
I mean, I, I'm still caught on this, because, so we have young people who, for whatever reason, our traditional model is not working for them, and they use an alternative model, many of which incorporate GED. We're getting, you know, we're getting deemed because they did not graduate with a high school diploma. Okay.
And I'm not even sure if the State Department of Ed considers a non-traditional high school diploma towards our cohort. So that is a valid question that we need to explore and answer to.
Okay, thank you.
We can't win either way.
I don't think so, but we can get it covered officially.
So, yeah, whatever recommendations you make, please make sure that they're, like, on the freeze out.
I mean, because we're putting this as a benchmark to measure ourselves. We have to make sure we know what we're measuring.
I know that, I'm not saying that at all, I just, I.
I mean, I know it's obviously not just within our control, but we, you know, we're having as one of our measures, the increase in the graduation rate.
So we know what the state, with regard to the next account, you know, next generation accountability frame, we know what we're measured on with regard to the four-year graduation and the six-year graduation. First, we're certain that we know, and so that.
But we just don't know all of our cohort, is what I'm hearing.
Currently, not during the year. We find out afterward who our cohort was, and they send us a roster of the students who are in the cohort. However, that information first came out this year in March.
Okay.
For the first time.
For the first time.
It's a delay.
So Abby and, or Sonia, you referenced the spike, right, that we see from in twenty twelve to twenty thirteen? And what I wanted to look at was some historical context here and past actions and initiatives. And, you know, this is clearly a list, and Sonia can speak to it, but, you know, it, there's a lot here, not only in terms of what has been implemented, but the, but the. The variance.
Yeah.
Of what has been implemented. And clearly, right, we can make some, you know, assumptions here as to, you know, what has worked, what hasn't, and what have we prioritized over, over the years.
Beginning in twenty eleven, or rather, October of twenty ten, many of you may remember that we were the recipient of a rather large federal grant called the High School Graduation Initiative Grant. And with the thirteen point three million dollars that we received, it spanned over five years. And it was a research-based grant application in that we referenced the fifteen dropout prevention strategies that came out of the research of Clemson University. And we not only referenced those strategies, but we initially, we, we implemented those strategies. So we went about hiring staff members to support a small learning environment. So that spike is attributed to the fact that we strategically identified our students by using data, whether they were in the cohort or not in the cohort. We took a look at students who needed, who had ten, a minimum of ten credits, who were habitually truant, who were new arrivals, and who were parenting or pregnant teens. And we also took a look at our state adjudicated youth. And those were the populations that we targeted, because research told us those are the ones who are least likely to complete. So we went about re-engaging these students by giving them a totally different environment to learn in. We implemented a flipped classroom through blended learning. So we had teacher-directed instruction coupled with mastery-based instruction using an online learning tool. With that, we were able to see students complete at a faster rate, and they were able to get the support they needed socially and emotionally. They were able to get support in removing the barriers that hindered them from accessing academics. So with the grant, we actually had MOUs with four of our CBOs to provide services that the schools could not provide. We increased the, the mental health services with the Village. We increased state adjudicated support with Catholic charities. We increased some of neighborhood friction with Compass Youth Builders. And we also had support from one other CBO, oh, Capital Workforce Partners. So we also provided some type of a stipend for students as they did job shadowing or had part-time employment, developing those career competency skills. So with that, we were able to graduate additional students. And we also used those funds to implement centralized summer credit recovery. So we moved away from having summer school based on the school budget. We took the grant funds and had summer school for all students who were enrolled in Hartford Public Schools. We did a deep dive with transcript audits to ensure that we were correctly and accurately identifying the students who needed courses in order to graduate. And we also ensured that we gave them the right courses. So we offered, whatever we offered in summer school was what the students needed. And so we also implemented a summer graduation. So students were able to march across the stage in August, not just in June, but we gave them an August option as well. Unfortunately, when those funds ended, many of those strategies ended. But we were able to sustain a few of those strategies, because they became embedded in the practices of some of our schools. So as you can see from the data, we, we maintained that seventy percent, that low seventy percent for, I think, three or four consecutive years. And then unfortunately, this year, we did experience a one point nine percent decrease. But some of those strategies, as I said, were sustained, namely, the mastery-based approach to learning, incorporating the online credit recovery. So not just giving a student a computer and having them sit isolated and working through different curricula or lessons, but having a teacher provide instruction alongside the student, but identifying the gaps that the student has, as opposed to giving them more of the same instruction. We identified their gaps, and we customized the instruction to ensure the students were getting exactly what they needed in order to master the content.
Sonia, in terms of the, the grant, right, so I recall, maybe it's not last summer, the previous summer, we were scrambling for funding for summer, or whenever it was that the sun, the grant sunsetted. And so just thinking ahead as to how we're going to forecast our programming, funding summer programming, not just in relation to this grant, as we heard, right? So after five years, right, the, the grant ends and everything walks out the door. There, there's gotta be something that we, that we, and I know you talked about sustainable practices, but I worry that they've not, you know, been embedded everywhere else, right?
They haven't been sustained with fidelity across the district. I hear exactly what you're saying. So taking a look at that concern and the urgency that this data is, is telling us, we conducted site visits, we are taking a deeper dive, another look at the data. We're breaking down not just the percent, what does one point nine actually equal when we're talking about number of lives, number of students? So analyzing the data on a deeper level, and also being smarter and more strategic. So taking a look at our current budget, what we currently have, and reconfiguring what we do with those funds. So instead of having X number of students in front of X number of teachers and giving them just a, a traditional, you know, September through June all over again, but condensed in July, we're looking at our resources and what we've learned about student-centered learning, and taking a look at the mastery-based approach, and how we can maybe increase the number of students and decrease the number of, of staff, but still provide a rigorous summer learning experience for students. Pre-assessments, customizing the course, providing the intervention, and then the post-assessment to show mastery. So a mastery-based approach using different tools that would allow us to maximize the budget that we currently have.
Another thing. So.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kim.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, feel the need to call out the Hartford Student Internship Program, which, thank you. As I strongly believe, work-based learning definitely assists and helps with the graduation rate. And, you know, for the city's part, even if for the summer program, we are working on a, our report, and Abby, I do believe your shop is connected, so thank you. So I think that report's gonna be coming out soon, but we do believe we are seeing this statistical difference in, in increase for graduation rate for young people who actually participate in those programs. So I just wanted to go ahead and call that out, and as a workforce development person on the word.
I'm glad you brought that up. Because Culinary Arts implemented a highly effective internship program under the direction of Roy Bermudez and their NAF Board partners. And they experienced a double-digit increase in the graduation rate, because they were really able to make the connection from the classroom to the career pathway.
And then the recommendation do close again. And which leads me to my point.
But, but we're carrying those strategies to the New Weaver. So the New Weaver really is gonna have a robust internship program and CTE pathways as part of the planning.
I, I won't fight you on that yet. But we'll pause that fight for later date.
How do we know on this slide whether something is still going forward or not?
Slide are you referring?
I'm sorry, the.
The.
So we don't, because on a subsequent slide that Oliver can speak to, he has the current strategies and actions that were implemented.
So if I can sneak one small question in. What do we do for our pregnant girls?
I'm sorry.
I don't know, I don't know. I, I'm literally sincerely asking the question.
I, I believe it's here. Because my, my daughter's friend, she brings her baby to school. Because it stopped for one period of time, right?
The Little Owls program.
Yeah.
The Little Owls Program. Because we got money from, oh, gosh, it was the SPPT grant. I can't remember what it stood for, but I know Marion Taylor and I, Flores, worked on that grant with Catholic Charities. And now Catholic Charities continues to work here at Hartford Public Schools.
We get little owls, but no little beavers and bulldogs? No, I'm just saying, so it's a centralized here, and that's it? So once, if, so a young lady would transfer here? That's what I'm trying to say, okay.
If she needs that level of support.
All right, no, no, I'm fine.
And we were also working with the parenting teen fathers. So some of that, yeah, some of that work is continued with the Catholic Charities work.
Whoa. Let's pause that. Okay.
It's just like, run back.
If you back up to, actually, no, sorry, the other way. Yep, the Algebra I and II Labs. So there are a variety of strategies in place for supporting students to make it to graduation. One of those is the Algebra I and Algebra II Labs. The obtaining math credit can be a barrier not only to graduation, but also to persistence in college. That's one of the biggest barriers is not succeeding in college algebra. So we have extra lab time for students in Algebra I and Algebra II at the high school level. Identify students who need extra support to finish those courses on time.
Sorry, during the day, after school?
During the school day, built into their school schedule. Additionally, there is a shift in graduation regulations in our policy in line with state policy for the class of 2021, so current ninth graders. And there's been fabulous work in the Office of Academics clarifying and cleaning up the course of study for district-wide so that we don't have eighteen different types of Algebra I, right? So we're working towards that consistency and rigor, of course, across all the schools. That also assists in case students are moving from neighborhood to neighborhood or school to school. So additionally, we've set, we've kind of bounded and looking for more coherence district-wide on high school scheduling. So we have set expectations, reducing the number of transitions that students will make in the school day, increasing the length of the class periods, and requiring time for intervention and advisory in every high school schedule. With seventeen different high schools or high school programs, there was a lot of variation in how the schedules ran, and we're tightening that, right, in planning towards next year.
So how long would that take to, to maybe all of it along?
They will, all will be on the same schedule, but there are expectations of reducing the transitions, increasing the time in individual classes, which supports, that particularly supports students who may have challenges earning some of the credit or may be behind in some subjects.
That has implications on professional learning as well, given that, you know, our teachers that might be used to a fifty-minute block, you know, have to go to a sixty or seventy-minute block. And that's even, even a twenty-minute, you know.
Teaching effectively during that whole time, bell-to-bell is an important professional learning initiative across the district.
How is your support staff, like parents, are they trained to help or no?
They'll be part of that professional learning as well. The eighth to ninth grade transition is, as Ms. Oliver pointed out, a challenge. And there are certain practices in place based on Sonya's leadership around the High School and the Graduation Initiative Grant. And there are needs for additional strategies in improving that transition and our success in retaining students and having them land appropriately and be strong through the ninth grade here. So that's, that's a work in progress.
So how much of this, because we're talking about this from a professional standpoint. From a student standpoint, what does this look like? I mean, I understand the labs, you get your intervention, things of that nature, but the transition eight to ninth, that, because I have an eighth grader that just transitioned to ninth, and his organizational skills are deplorable, they're horrible, which in my opinion affects how he's prepared, his readiness. So and that is a reset, because that's different from middle school. He's prepared for middle school, but he's not prepared for high school. How do we, is that a part of this strategy? Because again, what it affects, doesn't really affect his reading or his writing, but it is affecting his algebra completely. Because that's something you have to work at, practice at every day. You have to be diligent at it. So I'm just wondering how you're developing this, you said?
One of the major tools that we're using are the Student Success Plans and NAVIANS as the tool to help students really develop those skills in career development, academic connections, as well as social-emotional development. So having students complete tasks and implementing the SSP curriculum, organizational skills is touched on it, developing SMART goals, progress monitoring their own success, having parents log on and progress monitor through the NAVIANS tool. So it is a work in progress. Because of the vision of the board and the district, we were able to fund NAVIANS for all students, grade six through twelve. This was our first year that we've had it district-wide. And we're starting to see an increase in the usage rates. And now we're gonna start tracking the progress of those students who utilize the tool as opposed to the students who are just, you know, starting to utilize the tool. We have some great anecdotal information so far, but we're gonna dig deeper into the data around NAVIANS and how it's impacting academic success and growth.
There's a connection there for parents and families as well and leveraging that as an opportunity. I think it's an underutilized tool for our families. So self-capacity building there as well for our families.
I think that's awesome, and I think is, we can get that in front of parents.
We just had a session at Buckley High School.
Thank you.
It went really well.
Excellent, thank you.
So we've also looked at some alternative high school programs. We started at Springfield, and that was a credit recovery program that we'd like to explore options on retaining and supporting students here who are kind of not a non-traditional pathway through high school to accelerate them and get them caught up.
You mean like developing a program in-house like that? Since there are, like, there are some programs like that around.
Yeah.
They're like choice programs, I guess, or...
Right, but we're looking to do that in-house. We're exploring that. Additionally, internships connecting classroom content to career pathways is part of that trajectory towards not only capstone work, but also really richer internship experiences for students. And that is also under development. There's some pilot programs, but it's not consistent across the district at this time. Additionally, the data dashboards, the RISE Network data dashboards provide some powerful tools, especially for secondary leaders and teachers as well. And that data is very impactful for them to be able to drill down, track students who are at risk of reaching truancy or at risk of chronic absenteeism and putting special supports in place for them and building consistency and improved practices by attendance teams at every school to track and support those students in their return to school.
I'm very concerned about the math. And we've talked a lot about literacy, but we haven't talked much about math tonight. But what, what do you do when children are several grades? And I speak from personal experience. My seventh grader is several grades advanced in literacy and reading, but he's, his math is like at a third or fourth grade level. And he's got to get to algebra. We heard a wonderful presentation last week from Mario on what's happening in the math curriculum, but said, will that ever reach my child? Or will that be after he graduates? If he graduates.
He will.
So the curriculum retooling has been completed, certainly K through eight. And additionally, Algebra I and Algebra II are now new curriculum that are aligned to the progression, the stronger progression that's building up through the middle grades. So we're certainly, there are certainly challenges for, for students across the entire district who are facing the rigor of Common Core expectations and the statewide Algebra I assessment. So we're, we're seeing more repeaters in Algebra I at this time, but we're finding students better prepared for Algebra II. So there are challenges there, and we're, that's the strategy around the additional Algebra I and Algebra II Labs can help backfill certain skills so that students who enter Algebra I are receiving supports through those labs to backfill skills that where there may be deficits. There's also obviously a huge shift towards conceptual mathematics when you get to algebra. And some of the arithmetic and traditional skills are then, as many of us do as adults, right? We're using calculators and our phones to, to support us in managing some of those, those skill gaps, but the conceptual understanding still needs to be there.
Makes a lot of sense.
So, you know, Oliver, you talked about that we're seeing more students repeat Algebra I.
Right.
And so that's the data that we have to keep track of, given that, you know, we're, we're looking at on-track. How do we define a student that's on-track? And one way that we measure, right, is whether or not they have the credits necessary first time in to ninth grade. But if we're seeing that we're having, throughout the district, a higher number of students that are repeating, then we have to keep that in mind because then those students will, may not be considered on-track to graduate. But it's because, right, the rigor is, is increasing.
And we are addressing that. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow afternoon to take another, just a more informed, data-driven approach to Algebra I and ELA IX credit recovery. So to address this cohort issue, if you leave behind fifty percent of your ninth graders, you are not gonna have a strong cohort rate four years later. So with that in mind, and with our promotion criteria, we're looking at the students who have not shown proficiency or who have failed ninth grade ELA and Algebra I, providing them a mastery-based approach at credit recovery this summer. We're just piloting those two courses. So again, customizing the students, meeting the students where they are, taking that pre-assessment in the Algebra I, pre-assessment in ELA IX, seeing where the gaps are, customizing an intervention for them and supporting them in developing the skills to show mastery by the end of the summer program intervention.
Because I think what we don't want is, you know, and I heard a, a high school staff member last week say, you know, that we should go back to a previous model of having pre-algebra, you know, for, for, for our high school students. And so we're not going back there. So I just want to make sure that, right, we identify these types of interventions that you're talking about because, you know, this is where we have to pull through and continue to have the high expectations while providing the support such as the Algebra I Lab in the summer, you know, opportunities, so.
So it's getting late. I don't know if you want to continue. However, I'm not cutting you off, I'm disclosing. It's getting late, so I don't, I don't know. I just wanted to, I don't know if you need a five-minute break, but I wanted to sort of confer with the board because I know some of us have children, we need to get to bed.
Can we have a little break?
So, all right, so we're gonna take a five. All right, we'll take five, two-minute break, and we'll have our conversations. Thank you.
Hello, I am your proud superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. I am leading the crucial process of reimagining and restructuring our school district. I need you, all of you, to be significant partners in our process. We are doing this imperative work to deliver on our commitment to ensure improved student outcomes and equitable access to resources for each and every one of our beautiful and capable students. When we have completed this process together, we will hold in our hands a stronger, more equitable school district designed to serve all students well, a plan built by the entire community that will benefit the entire community. We at Hartford Public Schools are coordinating the process. But you, the community, families, students, teachers, and all of our stakeholders are the voices and the minds that must inform this work. By sharing your thoughts, you will help to co-create our district model. Our work together, which takes place over the coming months in community meetings with families, partners, and schools, will culminate in the presentation of recommendations for district models for excellence, different ways in which the district can be reimagined while ensuring the health and viability of our neighborhoods and continuing to provide access to opportunities and services for our families and students. For news about meetings and ongoing updates on our process, please visit our district website at www.hartfordschools.org.
Workshop up into our part two. And so with that said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So...
It's been moved to the second.
Second.
It's been moved to the second, all of them to adjourn immediately. Say aye.
Aye.
On both, aye, that is, we stand in adjournment.